Good evening, White Marsh. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Board of Supervisor meeting for January 28th, 2021. We're beginning just around 6:02 PM. Like to call this to order and J.C., would you like to begin with the pledge, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fran, do we have any announcements?
Yes, thanks Laura. The Montgomery County Office of Public Health is offering COVID-19 vaccine preregistration for persons age 65 and older. Those interested can register online at the county's website, montco PA.org. To be eligible, you must live or work in Montgomery County. Winter weather reminder, with snowfall forecasted for this weekend and early next week, please be mindful to park on the odd-numbered side of your street or in your driveway, and shovel sidewalks within 24 hours of snowfall ending. From the Fire Marshal, remember to keep space heaters at least three feet from anything flammable. With fireplaces, be sure to allow ashes to completely cool and place them in a metal container. Your fireplace should be cleaned and checked every fall. That's it.
Thanks Fran. And that's on the odd side, an odd-numbered street that you have to park with the snow, right?
That's correct.
All right. Excellent. Okay, so the first thing we have on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing. Do I, I guess, make a motion to open the public hearing? All right. To open the public hearing for conditional use number 04-20 Germantown Pike LLC and Zachary Dillow 606 and 608 Germantown Pike.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
May I proceed, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay, so tonight we have a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors. What I'm going to do is go ahead and do some administrative matters and mark some exhibits. But let me explain to you how the public hearing process works. So they'll, I'm going to go ahead and mark some exhibits. Then there will be an opportunity for Mr. Coles and any witnesses. We can go ahead and swear them in, or I believe he wants to do it all for proof related to those witnesses. Then there'll be an opportunity for board comment, then there'll be an opportunity for public comment, and then the board can either close the hearing or continue it to another date on the record. Also too, because this is a conditional use hearing, somebody can request what it's called party status. Party status means that you have the ability to cross-examine or take or call any witnesses yourself in this hearing if you are so interested. Thus, if Mr. Coles called a witness, you would have the ability to cross-examine that witness and/or call your own witnesses to either agree with or contest what Mr. Coles might be putting, might be putting forward. So what I wanted to do is, I wanted to mark as T1, a copy of this, the application for Germantown Pike Associates, for 608 Germantown Pike. Mark as T2, a copy of the advertisement of this, of this conditional use hearing. A copy of T3, a recommendation from our planning agencies as to this application. I believe both the county and the White Marsh Planning Commission both were in favor of this. And T4, copies of the pictures and postings that were included in this application for this evening. Does anybody on this Zoom call or Zoom meeting request party status? Just because you don't receive party status or aren't requesting it doesn't mean you can't comment. Party status, as I said again, was more an act of participation in calling and/or cross-examining witnesses. Is anybody requesting party status? Okay, I don't see anybody. Okay, seeing that nobody is requesting party status, Mr. Coles, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, sir, Mr. Kilkenny. Thank you very much. My name is Joe Coles. I'm an attorney and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 608 Germantown Pike Associates LLC. As Mr. Kilkenny mentioned, we have a conditional use application before you this evening. This is not a land development application. The applicant fully understands that if they're fortunate enough to have the board rule in their favor regarding the conditional use, in order to realize this project, the next step is to submit a land development application and proceed through a full land development review process with your township staff and your township professional consultants, most importantly, in this case, your civil design engineer. Here tonight, we're strictly addressing you regarding the use of this property. Conditional uses are permitted uses, they're just not permitted by right. So it's not as easy, it's just simply going to pull a permit with your building officer or going immediately to land development. One must come before the Board of Supervisors first and show that they fall within the criteria for the use being requested. Also on the call with me this evening are two principals of the applicant, Spencer Yablon and JB Reibstein, the applicant's architects, David Brower and Milton Major, and the applicant's civil design engineer, Mr. Alex Tweedy. He's from the engineering firm of Land Corps Engineers. What I'd like to do, as Mr. Kilkenny mentioned to you, is to put forth the case to you in the form of an offer of proof, which is really just me as the attorney describing the case. It's not a complex case. I think that's probably the easiest way to proceed. And then, as I mentioned, those individuals are present on the call. If anyone has any questions for our architect or our engineer or our principals, and at the conclusion of my statement, my offer of proof, I would simply call Mr. Tweedy to be sworn and to hopefully agree with everything I've said, if that's acceptable, if that's acceptable to the board.
I discussed this procedure with Mr. Coles earlier, and our recommendation, unless if anybody disagrees as we move forward with this.
Thank you very much. The conditional use before you is a conditional use for apartments in your village commercial district. The property is known as 608 Germantown Pike. Many of you are probably familiar with the property, but if I can, Mr. Meller, am I able to share my screen?
Yes, you can.
Okay. That's easy for you to say. Let's see if I really can. Do you have it?
Yeah. We can see it, yeah.
All right, well, this is the property. The property is a stone's throw from your township building. It's right next door to the Wells Fargo, same side of the street as the Wells Fargo and the Township Building. The property you're looking at on the left of this slide is the 608 property upon which the apartments are being proposed to the rear of the existing old home, and I'll obviously show you more about that. Parcels which are subject to this application, however, are both parcels, 606 and 608. 606 is to the right, it is currently a chiropractic office, it will remain a chiropractic office. The only reason that parcel is part of this application is that there will be shared parking with that parcel. The entrance points will be consolidated, which is obviously something that your village commercial district is, has sought to do, one of the primary goals of your village commercial district. And so we needed to make both parcels subject to the application. The other part, I think I already said to you, was the application also includes a merger of the two parcels, actually three parcels, which you'll see, which you'll see a little later. The next slide shows you the existing. This is an existing aerial, and you'll see that the property, which is the subject of the application, is outlined in the heavy white line. And you'll see from this slide that it's actually three parcels in that there is a third parcel to the rear within the residential zone. And again, the proposal is to merge all three of these parcels. Nothing's being proposed for the residential zone parcel in the back, but the two parcels that are long and thin fronting on Germantown Pike will be merged. On the top is the existing chiropractic office, use of which will not change. And to the rear is the older home, which you saw on the left of the previous slide, the use for which will change. That building is currently and has been for quite a number of years utilized as a dental office with an apartment. The dental office will be removed and terminated, and the existing residence will be converted into one, not converted, but it will be used as one residential unit. And then there'll be a new addition to the rear with the six new apartments. And if you look at this slide, you'll see from the aerial that there are a number of old additions on the back of the old 19th century home that fronts on Germantown. They're post-1950, they're not historic, they will be removed, and you'll be able to see that a little more accurately in subsequent slides. There's also a large garage to the rear, post-1950, which will also be removed as part of the. I take you to the next slide, you'll see the site plan essentially superimposed over the aerial. You'll see that the drives have been merged for one common drive. The existing home fronting on Germantown Pike remains, which is obviously another goal of your village commercial, to maintain that historic aesthetic and the streetscape. And there'll be an addition to the rear to house the six new proposed apartments. The addition will be no higher than the existing home on Germantown Pike, and you really shouldn't be able to see much of it, if any of it at all, from Germantown Pike. It protrudes a bit to one side, as you can see, but there will most likely be some landscaping. The parking will be shared, there'll be no use of the rear lot, and the chiropractic office, its use and its structure will remain as it is. Again, the only reason that 606 Germantown Pike piece is part of this application is because of the jointer of the drive and the sharing of the parking. We have, we've, let me show you some of the other slides to give you a little, little better flavor of what's happening here. This is another slide similar to what you saw at the beginning, where you can see the drive, you can see the older home, and you can see the garage to the rear. And Mr. Kilkenny, I believe these are 11 slides, we can just mark them applicants, one through.
A1, yeah, we'll put them all in one packet, that's fine.
Okay, everything can be A1, this is slide number four of A1. And this is slide number five of A1, really doesn't show you much more new except for the facade, which will be restored. But, but kept the same look, the same window configuration, the same door configuration. This is the addition to the rear that currently exists. You can see pretty clearly from the roof lines where the old home is and where the post-1950s additions were installed. All of those additions will be demolished as part of the construction of the new addition to house the six apartments. There's a shot that was actually taken from the Wells Fargo parking lot. You can again see the additions to the rear of the old dwelling. You can see the garage in this slide, which will be demolished, and you can see in the distance the chiropractic office, which will remain. There's the garage. And these are some architectural renderings of what the addition to the rear will most likely look like. And that brings you back to the site plan. This proposal underwent lengthy reviews by your staff, numerous calls and meetings with Mr. Guttenplan to ensure that there was no zoning relief required. We worked our way through a number of issues that might have resulted in requests for variances, and we solved them. So we believe the plan is in conformance with, certainly in conformance with your zoning ordinance. There may be some waivers as it goes through land development, which as you know are typical, but we don't foresee anything significant at this point in time. The land development process will of course address stormwater management on this site. Particularly important for this site, because my suspicion is that at least the 608 property probably hasn't undergone a significant stormwater review ever. There hasn't been any significant development out there in many years. Obviously, the applicant will have to satisfy your township engineer that stormwater is managed effectively. There'll be a look at traffic, obviously, as part of the land development review process. Also, for purposes of the conditional use, I can tell you that what's being proposed will generate significantly fewer peak hour trips than a number of uses on this parcel, which are permitted by right. Permitted by right, right now in the, in the village commercial district, you could have a daycare, a business office, a dance studio. Obviously, those uses would generate significantly greater number of trips, both in the peak AM and the peak PM than, than six apartments. We're in receipt of review letters from staff. We have Charlie's December 1, 2020 zoning ordinance compliance review. We have no problem with anything stated in that letter. I believe it shows conformance with the zoning ordinance requirements. And anything in there that needs to be solved, I think there are a number of solutions for, and we're, we don't see any problems. We also have a letter dated October 21 from your Fire Marshal. Our civil design engineer has been in communication with your Fire Marshal both before and after issuance of that review, and we don't see any problems with satisfying him completely. My understanding is that the board is probably most concerned with the criteria for a conditional use set forth in your zoning ordinance. And as Charlie points out in his compliance review letter, that would be Section 11637F, 1 through 8. And I'll, in closing, I'll run through those real quickly for you. And obviously, if you want more elaboration, we can do that, and Mr. Tweedy can, can go into significantly greater detail than what I have. But the first, the first factor is to determine that the conditional use is specifically authorized by the zoning ordinance. It is, 11629B specifically permits by conditional use apartments within the village commercial district, the district in which these properties are located. Determine that the proposed use will be compatible with the character of the neighborhood. There are a number of apartment units right across the street, or residences on the other side of the Wells Fargo. I think it's clear that it is consistent with the surrounding uses and will certainly not be a detriment or alter the character of the surrounding area. The next criteria is to determine that the proposed use will not have a harmful effect on vehicular traffic, given the size and bulk of the use. The size and bulk of what's being proposed are within the limitations set forth under your ordinance. We believe they're compatible with the area, there is no significant massing. Location, entrance of exit drives. Obviously, as I said, we're going to be consolidating what is currently two access points down to one, which not only satisfies the goals of the village commercial district, but I think makes your Fire Marshal pretty happy too. We're providing the required parking. We're not going to provide any more than the required parking. That was one of the planning commission's concerns. The site requires 31 spaces, 14 for the apartments, two per unit. Remember, six new and one in the existing building. Plus 17 for the chiropractic office, for a total of 31. We had initially shown 42 spaces, and you're still looking at 42 spaces on this plan, on this slide. The planning commission expressed some concern regarding the abundance of parking spaces in that it might affect our ability to efficiently manage stormwater, and it might require the removal of more trees than might otherwise be necessary. So we agreed with them that we will provide the 31 spaces that are required. Determine that the use is consistent with the policies contained in the comprehensive plan and the open space plan. This is compatible with and in conformance with your zoning ordinance and your comprehensive plan. Your open space plan doesn't mention this property specifically, but as I stated, we will be reducing parking lot size in an effort to preserve more trees in some of the existing wooded areas. Determine that the surrounding, I'm sorry, the surrounding neighborhood will not be subjected to objectionable noise, lighting, glare, heat, ventilation. The residential use being proposed is, is low impact, particularly given the uses that are surrounding it. And we will obviously, again, submit through your land development process to a lighting plan and whatever, whatever other steps are necessary. Determine that the design of the proposed development minimizes adverse effect, including visual impacts of the proposed use on adjacent properties. I think it's pretty significant that we are, again, maintaining the old home on Germantown Pike and really attempting as best we can to hide the proposed addition behind it. And it will not have a significant impact on visually on the area. Determine that the proposed use will comply with the regulations in the zoning district we already talked about. And again, it was a product of a long analysis and some changes to eliminate the variance requests that we first thought might be necessary. And determine that the proposed use would not unduly burden sanitary sewers, school, fire, and stormwater management facilities. Again, this is going to have to go through a land development process. That is not always the case with a conditional use application that is heard by the Board of Supervisors. But in this case, we're going to have to show that we have adequate provision of those public services. There is sewer in the street, there is water in the street. Based upon prior experience of the applicant with uses like this, we expect we may have one school child in these, in these six apartments. They're mostly rented by, by young professionals. And that's really all I have by way of describing the application to you. As I mentioned, we had Mr. Tweedy here, and if it's okay with the board and Mr. Kilkenny, I would have Mr. Tweedy sworn and have him comment on my opening statement, and then make the folks who are here available to all of you for questions if you have them, and me.
Yeah, it'd be great if the court reporter could swear in the witness.
If I could just have the witness raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony will give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
If you could kindly give me your full name for the record, I'd appreciate it.
D. Alexander Tweedy, T W E E D I E.
Thank you.
Mr. Tweedy, you were on the call and were able to hear the entirety of my opening statement to the board?
I was.
And do you agree with everything I said?
I do.
Is there anything you'd like to add, or is anything I didn't get right?
No, I believe you covered everything necessary.
Okay, and Mr. Tweedy, you are a civil design engineer, correct?
Yes, a professional engineer in the state of Pennsylvania.
Okay, and you prepared the plan that we saw this evening that was issued by Land Corps Engineer?
Correct.
Okay. I would ask that Mr. Tweedy be accepted as an expert in the field of civil design engineering. That's all the questions I had for him, and I would obviously make him available to the board for any questions.
Does anybody on the, on the board have any objection to him being classified as an expert?
No.
Okay, does anybody, Laura, maybe you can ask if there are any board member comments, and then see if there are public comments.
Do we have any board member comments? Questions?
Question for Mr. Coles. You indicated that you anticipated that when this goes through land development, you may require some waivers. Do you know what those waivers might be?
Mr. Tweedy, can you answer that question?
Um. We haven't done the full land development preparation yet, but we did have an original sketch plan review. A lot of the waivers we anticipate would be more procedural in nature with the typical survey extending 500 feet and 200 feet. Some of those drafting provisions as far as regional plans, we typically ask for a waiver to replace with an aerial photo. Stuff related, mostly features related to those type of submission criterias that are typical for such an application.
Do you know if your elimination of the parking spaces in turn eliminates the need for any waiver for, related to impervious cover?
Even the plan before you is compliant with impervious cover at the larger stalls. The, the main goal of reducing the parking spaces is to preserve more trees. The planning commission asked us to limit the intrusion into the existing wooded area to the greatest extent possible, and only propose the minimum required parking by code, and, and we agreed to make that revision.
Thank you.
I have a question. How many bedrooms in each unit are you looking at?
Mr. Reibstein, are you able to answer that question?
Yes, thanks Joe. The.
Perhaps, Mr. Coles, why don't you have Mr. Reibstein sworn in and identify himself for the record?
Okay, can we have the court reporter swear, Mr. Reibstein?
If I could just have you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony will give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And again, if you could state your full name for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Joshua Benjamin Reibstein.
And Mr. Reibstein, you've been, you've been involved in other projects similar to this one in the area, correct?
I have, yes.
Okay, and you are one of the principals of 608 Germantown Pike Associates LLC?
Yes.
And can you tell us what you know now about the configuration of the new units?
Sure, so the new addition will have six units, and those are planned right now as all two-bedroom units. So that'll be a total of 12 bedrooms in the, in the new addition. The existing old farmhouse, if you will, that we're going to renovate is going to either be two or three bedrooms. We haven't quite laid that out specifically yet. So a total of, you know, 14 or 15 bedrooms in the project.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other board questions? Okay, I'm going to open it up. Do we have any public comments?
This is Linda Dahl, I'd like to ask a question. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Coles very much, because I was in on that planning meeting, and I was just waiting you, for you to talk about the parking and how they asked for less parking. So I appreciate that you are trying to cut back on the parking and save the trees. But I'm trying to do the math with that, and I, I might not have gotten it right. You said for each apartment, you need two parking spaces, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's six apartments, that means you need 12 parking spaces, right?
No, there's seven.
Oh, there's seven apartments.
I've been, I've been, I've been stating six new in the addition in the back, and one in the existing farmhouse toward the front of the, of the parcel. So that's a total of seven, and two spaces for each is 14, which I mentioned.
Right, and the 17, right, I, I see that now, I just was hearing six. So thank you. And my next question is, I don't know the rules, but when we have this shared parking thing, I thought the whole idea with shared parking is you need less parking spots, because the chiropractor, I guess, I'm assuming, works during the day, and people are leaving the apartment during the day. So you may actually need less than the 31 spaces, is that a true fact? Or no, you still need the 31 for 17 for the chiropractor, you're really not sharing those with the apartment, you're devoting those to the chiropractor. I'm just trying to save trees.
Okay. The ordinance requires 31 spaces, and frankly, our goal has been to approach the township with a conforming plan. And, and that, that means providing 31 spaces. There isn't, there is an essence of shared parking here in that we are consolidating these two lots as opposed to the lots being separate. We are sharing parking between 606 and 608. I'm not sure that anyone's comfortable with the idea of going any fewer than the 31 spaces, but certainly it's something that we could leave as an open question as we move through land development. If there are some studies that anybody would like to present that show that really it's not necessary, then maybe there's a possibility through the land development process of placing some of those spaces into a reserved parking agreement where they might not be built immediately, but that's something we could explore at land development, certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Coles, I would assume that from a shared parking perspective, that, that the kind of the spots for the chiropractic office would, in essence, maybe an off-hours be available to the residents of the apartment building if they had guests over at various times?
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely. It's, it's a wonderful situation in that when the owner of unit five decides to have a party with five or six or seven or eight guests, the parking is going to be there. The party is probably going to be at seven o'clock at night, and it's a real built-in shared parking arrangement that you wouldn't necessarily have if the properties remained divided as they are today.
Right.
This is Adele, though, I have a couple of questions as well. Also having to do with parking. If, Mr. Coles, if you could review for us, what is, what are the uses in the building that contains the chiropractic office? What else is going on in that building?
Nothing else, it's chiropractic practice.
So the chiropractor occupies all, all floors, it looks like it's a three-story structure? Is that correct?
That's correct. The, I don't know that he actually utilizes all floors, but I do know that that's the only. That's correct. The, I don't know that he actually utilizes all floors, but I do know that that's the only use in there. I mean, some of the floors may not be open to the public. They may be used for storage, or maybe he doesn't even use the top floor. But that's the only use in that in on that property. The only use on six oh six is a chiropractic practice.
And if I understand correctly, the requirement, the code requirement is that there be seventeen parking spaces for the chiropractic office, and I assume that that's based on the square footage. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Um, Tweedy, what exactly is that seventeen spaces based upon? Is it wholly square footage or is it square footage and employees? What is it exactly?
For medical office, the the requirement is actually um based on square footage. It's one stall per two hundred square foot per medical office square footage. So we are required by code for fifteen stalls. We're providing seventeen. The seventeen is based on, that is the number of parking stalls that he has on his property today. So we're maintaining his existing condition, which is generally in line with the code requirement. And then in addition to the existing medical office parking, we're providing our um required apartment parking that you spoke about earlier.
So if it is indeed the case that only a portion of that building is used for medical offices and perhaps all or por- or a portion of the upper story is not used, um, might it be possible to um reduce the number of spaces set aside for the chiropractic office? Because uh, it would seem to me that um parking for seventeen cars is is a lot of parking. Um, do you know how many chiropractors prac- practice at any given time?
I don't know the exact employee count, but I have been on the property out there, and he, when I was on the property, a good portion of his existing parking lot was full with his um patients and staff. Um, Mr. Coles mentioned that that not all the building might be used for the office. I think what he meant with that and what he stated with that was not open to the public. A lot of the upper floors of the building are his office space and storage space to support his business, whereas the main public space is on the first floor, but the entirety of the building is his practice. Um, we reviewed this with the owner and and our design when we discussed reducing the existing parking. And like Mr. Coles said, we're we're comfortable reducing to the minimum, but I don't believe we're comfortable reducing below. He uses the majority of his existing parking today, which is why we maintain that number of seventeen. And then we're providing the code required two stalls for our facility, but not most developers would ask for additional visitor parking for the apartment building. We are not, we are agreeing to just the minimum of two stalls per apartment because we know, as Mr. Coles previously discussed, that after hours for visitor parking, we would have the availability of the shared parking agreement with the medical office once their facility is closed. But with our analysis, we believe that the the code required parking is the appropriate parking to provide for the two uses.
And uh, this is a question of probably uh for Mr. Tweedle, um Tweedy Tweedle, I can't, I'm sorry, can't read.
Tweedy.
Tweedy. Um, what is the increase in impervious surface as a result of this project?
Um. I'd have to do some math, but approximately, well, the project that you see on screen is approximately twenty-one thousand square feet increase. But we, as discussed, we are, oh, wait, actually not. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm reading the wrong chart. Um. Yeah, about twenty-one thousand square feet, but that's for the forty-two parking stalls. And as discussed, we agreed to reduce the parking, and we have not analyzed what that um impervious reduction is. We obviously will, you know, that'll be part and parcel of the land development application with the stormwater report and the revised zoning chart with the reduced parking.
Okay, and uh, the following question, I think, i- is best directed to either uh the township solicitor or to Charlie Gotten Plan. Uh, it's my understanding that uh in Village Commercial, the requirement is that there be shared parking uh between adjacent parcels and with them, with the merging of these parcels, they're no longer, in a sense, adjacent parcels. They are, they're one, one parcel. So how does this meet the requirement of the code?
And and I'm gonna jump in also, just before, maybe before Charlie or Sean answer that, and just because I'm a little bit confused. Is is for Charlie and Sean, are these issues relevant for conditional use application? Or are these issues that that get um resolved during the land development process? I always get those a little bit confused, and I know folks in the public do too, so I just want to make sure. Um, you know, we we all know what what we're focused on here.
Well, I will answer and certainly let.
I figured you'd answer first, Joel, and I'll chime in. So, yeah.
Thank you. Um, in terms of Ms. Zove's last question, it is certainly relevant because um that is one of the criteria for the conditional use. However, there is an exception um for that. And it says, however, if a permitted or conditional use is being converted to a new conditional use, this requirement does not apply, and that is the situation in this particular case. There is, there are existing uses on the site that are either permitted or conditional uses in this district. And Mr. Coles and his clients are proposing to convert building to a new conditional use and add a new conditional use. So that um requirement is not relevant in this particular case.
So the the existing uses fall within the permitted uses under conditional use. But 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 they exist as conditional uses because they were grandfathered in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
There was not a conditional use hearing to allow the existing uses. There was a a grandfathering that um permitted the existing uses.
They are legally non-conforming uses because they existed at the time that the zoning was um enacted.
And and so even uh, even by virtue of there being grandfathered in, they meet the standard for an existing conditional use and therefore meet the require, the the plan meets the requirement for a conversion as you suggested. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, and we've had um some of these discussions with representatives from Sean Kilkenny's office.
Yeah, I know Dave Sander talked extensively with Charlie and Mr. Coles, and that was our office's conclusion.
Thank you.
Hi, can I um, can I step in and ask a question?
Sure.
My my name's Tom Manley. I'm a resident uh right on the other side of the Wells Fargo um building. You can see my house actually right there, and I, if I look to my left, I can actually see the property out my window. Um, I have several concerns here. Uh, first off, the impervious surface, which has been discussed already, um, it points right at Westaway Drive. And I'm very concerned because those poor people that live down there have had more than their fair share of water. We all know that there's a huge problem, and I don't want to add anything to those, you know, to what they've had to go through here over the past few years. That's a big concern. So if there's anything that's going to be done with with respect to uh water management, it really has to be, um, it really has to take that into consideration. We don't want to make that problem any worse than it already is. The second thing that really bothers me is, you know, talking about the traffic and off hours and, you know, since the pandemic started, traffic around here has been fantastic. But before that, it's been terrible, and uh the construction site right across the street, behind the former uh Heaven and Earth Salon, it's gonna be a nightmare once that happens. People coming out, they can't really see if they're turning left or right. Um, I don't think we need to build anything else in this area. It's already really bad um as it is. The third thing that really gets me, and this is something that just bothers me as a neighbor, is that, you know, I've walked past this property since it was purchased last year. I walk by that property almost every single day with my dog, and, you know, they're not really taking good care of their um property. I had a um, um, I have a picture here I took over the summer. It was completely overgrown with weeds. I had to actually call and complain to the township that somebody come out and take a, and do something about it. Uh, it was, uh, but then off after the last snowstorm that we had, nobody came by to shovel the sidewalk. It was just completely iced over. People were slipping on it. I saw there's a bus stop that's that's nearby. So I, you know, I, they're not good neighbors so far, and I don't know what else they're going to be asking for here. But I think they need to demonstrate a little good goodwill on their their part. If they, you know, want people to to, you know, be happy about this or at least go along with it. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Tom.
Hey, this is, this is Joe Downey. I have a question or two. I live also. Uh, I know, I guess, I'm on Kerper. My house is also in the picture. I'm a couple doors down from Tom, actually, on the corner. Kerper in Germantown. So, and I apologize. I was doing another civic duty here, and I was a a few minutes late to join here. So if these were already addressed, um, I apologize. Is this a final approval hearing for the or a a final approval for this uh project?
No, this is a conditional use, so it will still have to go through the land development phase.
And then back through you guys again, or is it, okay? Because I normally I get notices for everything, and the way I read the notice, I thought this was kind of a end game, and I'm like, well, where where do, this is the first notice I've received on the on the project, so that is helpful here. Um, the zoning of the chiropractic office now, I know that someone asked about the use of it, but what's it zoned for? Does anybody know? Is it, is it zoned all commercial or the second and third floor apartment uses? Does anybody know? My understanding is. You know where I'm going with it, right, Joe? I'm I'm asking, can they, so they get disapproved, and then we're gonna put, we're gonna rent those two floors out, right, to to residence? Well, uh, my understanding is that both parcels are zoned Village Commercial One. There's been no suggestion of changing that zoning, and the proposal, which is currently on the table, is in conformance with the Village Commercial One. All right, I'm not familiar with that. I mean, my house is residential on the corner here, so I don't know if that allows for a rental in Village Commercial One. But the, can they rent it uh in a Village Commercial One? Can the chiropractor rent out the second and third floor as apartments if they have baths in them or whatever? Is that can, is that use permitted? Uh, well, apartments are permitted in the um, in the Village Commercial One. My understanding is that if if, again, if the applicant were fortunate enough to receive an approval of this conditional use, my strong suspicion is that the uh Board of Supervisors would attach a condition that use of the property be in substantial conformance with the testimony and exhibits presented at this evening's hearing, which is seven apartments as depicted. So if there were a new conditional use, um, it 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 may or may not need to go through additional zoning approvals. That would be up to your zoning officer. Okay, um, so then, last question, guys, is that if it, um, so this arrangement that's here between the chiropractic office owner and the gentleman here um on the phone who bought the property, um, is that, are they combining the properties into one, or is there just an agreement of use between the two here? No, the proposal is to merge all three parcels. So it will essentially be a reverse subdivision. Where there currently exists three lots, there will, at the end of the day, be only one. And who owns all three? Is it a shared ownership? I guess my point is, can one sell, if one sells is where I'm going with this. If one of them sells, does that, they all have to sell. Like, in other words, like, if this deal goes through, chiropractor says, I'm gonna cash out my building, does this, does this continue, or isn't, they're all now joined by this uh, by this condition they're seeking? Okay, I'll try to, I'll try to answer your question real quickly, because there can be a a quick answer and a very long answer, okay? You have to distinguish between zoning and land use versus ownership. They're two totally different things. Zoning ordinances can't regulate renting. Zoning ordinances can't regulate ownership. If your question is whether, once consolidated, this dirt can be uh separated again, the answer is no, not without going through a new subdivision process. If your question is, might the chiropractor sell some interest he has in the overall parcel, the answer is yes. That's always the case. Someone might sell a share of their ownership in a corporation. But once the dirt is merged into one parcel, it cannot then be subdivided again without the approval of White Marsh Township. All right, thanks, Joe. You did answer. It was the first part there, meaning once it's joined, um, it's, you know, it is a parcel. Yep, so thank you. Yeah, my guess is, once again, that the township will, as part of the land development process, require that both on the land development plan and perhaps even in separate documentation, there be a consolidation of these three currently separate parcels. Okay, so just as feedback um to the to the board here, I mean, it looks big to me. Um, I have only gotten this notice a few days ago. First, I've really heard about it, so um, you know, it it feels like it's a uh, a lot of uh people and possibility for, you know, something probably too big in that, in that spot, in my opinion. Um, is is what I would say is feedback here. So, at least from what I know at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I appreciate it. Do we have other public comments, questions?
I'd, I'd like to comment on this. Um, first of all, um, what Joe just said.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Glick, can you just identify yourself for the record?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Eli Glick, Whitefield Drive. Um, what Joe Downey just said concerns me a bit in in terms of uh notice. Um, as a close resident, um, he says he was just notified it with a few days, and and that just seems to be out of compliance with the requirements for notice. Um, and if that's true of all of the neighbors, and they had decided that they wanted to um seek counsel together to uh address uh some of the concerns they brought up, I think that the, if that's the case, that that they should be given an opportunity to come back um and put this meeting on hold. Um, that said, the um the one drawing uh that is, it's not a drawing, it's a um satellite image uh of the property. Um, I think it's either the next one after this uh or the one after um shows. Keep going, please. Yep, stop, go back. Okay, that one. So, um, they, what they're proposing here is to remove um what looks like to me more than half of the green space, um, which is trees, um turf grass, whatever else is growing there, that is a permeable area, and they're gonna replace that uh with macadam. And I understand that stormwater issues are generally reserved for land development, but this project does not fit into our township. Um, our latest um uh comprehensive plan update um talks about the need to preserve space and protect our environment and trees. And I would say that this property is in violation of that comprehensive plan update. Um, a- and in in terms of hea- health and safety, I think you have to look at this from a stormwater perspective right now. Um, the water that runs along the north side of Germantown Avenue runs from the township building down to the Wawa, and during storms, there are torrents of water from the buildings coming off of those properties on Germantown, going into Germantown. And there's no room for that water to go anywhere else, and this property is proposing putting on all this macadam, and that's just gonna make it worse and more dangerous for our residents and the traffic that goes there. And that has to be an issue during conditional use. And 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 I would ask Mr. Kilkenny to advise the Board of Supervisors for a method to not grant this based on those issues. Thank you. Mr. Kilkenny, perhaps I could say something before you do that in response to some of the concerns?
This was a comment. I, it's the board's discretion. I don't. If the board was inclined to turn this down for whatever reason, of course, I would talk to them about that. I've not gotten that kind of indication. If I did, I would speak to them about it. I viewed Mr. Glick's comments as a comment.
Okay.
I I would, I would like to know about the notice that was given. Maybe that's a question. I, I would, I would like to know about the notice that was given. Maybe that's a question for Rick. You know, was, were, are we in compliance with the?
I believe Charlie can talk to that. I believe those were all entered into the record, but yes.
We are in compliance. The notice was sent out late last week. We're actually not required to do it with, there's no, there's an indication in the ordinance that failure to send out notice does not invalidate anything, but the notice was sent out on Friday at the post office. I understand most residents received it on Monday. And this was also in front of the planning commission in December with indication that there would be a public hearing. And we do have the ability for folks to get our agendas automatically through a notify me process on our, on our website, which we have publicized rather freely, I think.
Thank you.
I have a comment on that. We have plenty of time to, to do that and watch for that, right? So the, we have a property across the street from my house that was fought for years to come in. I watched proposals that were 100 times better than what we see over here got shot, get shot down. And then somehow it was allowed to come in the way it is here. And I know that's a different, but the whole, so Mr. Charlie, Mr. Gutter Plan, that is unacceptable to hear that, that, yeah. I think I've always gotten notices. I've always had the, like, advance warning. So I think I had enough notice. I came in, I had time, I could have found time to do this. I'm not taking away from that. But I don't find it acceptable to think that I'm not, I'm going to sit here and wait for the next meeting to come by and I'm not going to get a notice when I've gotten notices for almost every other thing that they've done here, right? Thank you.
If I could just clarify, because this issue keeps coming up. On the issue of notice, there's only certain procedures that require notice by law and by our ordinance. For example, you will not get a notice when this goes to land development, which is why it's so important, if people want to follow this, to sign up for the notify me process on our website so that you can get all the agendas emailed to your inbox automatically without asking for them. And you can see what's on every agenda. Land developments do not get notification. Conditional uses, zoning hearing board and some other processes do. But land developments are not done that way by law. So it's very important if you're interested in maintaining continuity to watch for the, either go on the website and look at the agendas or sign up to get them automatically in your inbox.
Thank you, Charlie. And are there any other public comments? Yes, Amy. I'm sorry, I'm seeing who I see in front of me here.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Amy Baker. I live across the street from the Manleys and the Downeys. So my picture, my house is not in the picture, but very close to it. I just wanted to circle back to the parking question. Is it safe to assume that the parking spots that are being excised from the proposal are the ones that are closest to the B zone? Will the parking lot being, be getting shorter and sort of line up with the end of the Wells Fargo parking lot in its current iteration?
Mr. Tweedy?
Yeah, correct. The layout we have for the revised parking with the 32 stalls instead of the, the 40 plus. Generally, looking at the arrow you see today, the rear of that Wells Fargo parking lot would be the rear of our proposed parking lot. And it should be noted that for the existing medical office building, we talked about the tree cover you can see. It should be noted that a lot of that is, is canopy cover where the, the tree trunk is in the center. The existing chiropractor parking lot extends further into the tree line than you can see as it's, you know, underneath the canopy of the existing tree. So the extension of the parking is, is very limited on the chiropractor lot and then would be widened on the, the 608, the apartment parcel to match that. And that limit is generally in line with the rear of the existing Wells Fargo parking lot is what you could expect.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I actually walked over there on Monday or Tuesday after I got the notice, just to sort of eyeball things. And again, I'm not familiar with these processes. This is the first meeting that I've actually attended. And so one of the things that I just want to make sure is, is being considered when we talk about impervious coverage and water, you know, stormwater management. I know across the street with the new houses and the townhomes, there are a number of retention ponds that have been put in in order to, you know, perhaps unsuccessfully manage that water, but in an attempt to manage the water. Is a retention pond something that would be considered? Because a lot of the children, so something that you can't see in the picture, is there's a parking lot at the Messiah Church there? And a lot of the kids from the neighborhood access that parking, that, that playground from, through the Wells Park, Wells Fargo parking lot, perhaps, you know, not in a way that is neighborly, but has always been tolerated. And so I guess I have some concerns about if there's a large retention pond and there are kids that are, you know, elementary school age, you know, traversing back through there. You know, it will, it does present a potential challenge or a potential danger issue for, you know, six and seven year olds to be traversing back through there and have a larger tension pond that isn't fenced around.
Yeah, I can, I can address that. Anything that would be proposed would be likely an underground system beneath the parking lot. So there wouldn't be any, what we would refer to as a surface basin, which you would consider more like a pond. This would be pipes underground that store the water beneath the parking surface. So you would, from, from, from your walk through the parking lot, you wouldn't even know there's a pond there. It would be underneath the pavement hidden in pipes.
Great. That also alleviates some of my concerns about mosquitoes. And then the other question that I have is I assume that, you know, the, the canopy coverage that's lost will be somehow addressed in, in the plans and future iterations of, of things. I have, you know, a lot of love of trees. And so that the, the loss of all those trees back there breaks my heart.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Can I say what I was going to say? I just, a, a question, I guess, from attending.
Is that, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find, is that Linda?
Yeah, it's Linda Dahl. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
You know, from attending all these meetings, I'm just wondering, I guess this is a question for Sean or Charlie. So far I've heard that Amy Baker, Joe Downey and Tom Manley may live all really close to this. So they could be parties. And if they say that they're a party, it doesn't mean anything more than they would get like the transcript of this and be able to say things in the future and get noticed because they claim themselves a party. Where Mr. Downey is saying he's not getting noticed. If he said he was a party, then he could get, be sure he got noticed. Am I correct with this?
I, Ms. Dahl, I explained upfront at the beginning of this hearing what party status afford you. And what it does afford you is the ability to cross-examine witnesses and call your own witnesses at this conditional use hearing. It does not engender any kind of additional notification access or requirements. Mr. Gutten Plan explained what those are for the conditional use process and that if and when this goes to land development, people aren't necessarily going to be automatically notified. They should sign up through the township system.
What about rights to appeal?
I don't, so any, any agreed landowner would have the, would have the right to appeal this. If the fact that someone requested party status at the hearing could be persuasive to the court, but it's not binding. But I'm not a judge.
This is Sedell Dove. I have a follow-up question, if I may. One of the slides depicted the garages that will be raised at the rear of 608. Can, can, can someone pull that slide back up? There, there. Well, back up, one before the previous slide. That one. So in looking at this, it appears that access to those garages has been through the Wells Fargo parking lot. Is that indeed the case? And does there exist a formal easement that allows such access? And if that easement is formal, is recorded, what will become of it as a result of this project?
I am not aware of any recorded easement agreement with Wells Fargo related to that access point.
I can talk about that if you'd like.
Please.
There's no formal easement in place that exists or has been recorded. There is a, a very old, I think it's from when this original, when the garage was built in 1950 something that, that allowed for a, the, the name of the agreement slips my mind right now. But basically it's a access agreement that Wells Fargo allows access through their parking lot. And it is terminable at any time by Wells Fargo. So there's no actual legal right, other than this agreement, for long-term use of that driveway. We have approached Wells Fargo about that, but they are not interested in formalizing that. So our plan contemplates eliminating that access point.
And I, I, this is a question for the Board of Supervisors. Might there be a condition imposed as, as, as part of the granting of the conditional use that prevents, disallows, whatever the proper term would be, any access from that Wells Fargo lot onto these parcels through this, through this access way?
I can tell you that it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen.
Wait, it's not meaning what? Meaning?
Meaning that's going away. We don't have any legal, we don't have any long-term legal easement agreement with Wells Fargo. And we will not be creating one. So that access point is going away.
But Wells Fargo is not willing to entertain the creation and of a document that would formally terminate that access. Is that what you said?
No, it's not what you said.
Now, that access point, regardless, ma'am, that access point is going to go away. That access point is going to be going away.
Can, can you show us the site plan, the conditional use site plan again? And point out where that access point is in relation to the, the plan?
Alex, where would you put that access point? Do you think?
If you say, so the, you have the existing building, which is in a light tan. And then the proposed apartment addition, which is in a slightly darker tan. And then behind that, you see seven parking stalls with a brown color. Those seven parking stalls about the midpoint or maybe a third of the way back is the point of that existing access drive. And as you can see, we've converted that whole area to green space directly behind the building. And we have our proposed parking stalls there without any form of any kind of drive aisle through that portion or, or any ability to, to maintain that drive aisle.
And just to confirm, there is no recorded easement that afford access from the Wells Fargo lot to your parcel or from your parcel to Wells Fargo? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think he said that like three times already, Sedell. It was really, really clear.
Yeah, and I'm going to just say, these, these questions are not what's really, I mean, I understand why they're coming up at the moment and I appreciate the questions, but this is a conditional use.
The conditional use hearing, many of these questions are related to stormwater access, parking or related to land development. The Board of Supervisors have before them, if this is an appropriate use, does it meet the criteria under our ordinance for the use of the property, meaning apartments?
But I do, you know, I appreciate that, Sean. But I do want to say that, you know, I'm sensitive to the stormwater issues and the fact that Westway is across the street and the neighbors that have come before here tonight to voice their concerns. You know, I.
I have a concern. I'm sorry to interrupt. One more, one, one last thing here that the, because the, I want to, I want to be clear that.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That property is, should be condemned.
Joe, Joe, excuse me, the chair of our board was speaking. She, she was, she was in the middle of a sentence. I mean, we've been talking about this for a half hour. We've let people talk. We certainly haven't stopped the conversation.
For my property to be converted, Mike, because of where I am.
Completely out of order at a meeting.
For the reason that this has a lot going on, you know, I, it's hard when everybody is on a Zoom call and we're not all together for me to get a, a true pulse of the board. I would like to propose that we continue this hearing until our February 11th meeting. I'm open to what the rest of the board members has to say.
Are you seeking a, a law? I guess, are you seeking a motion? You're looking for a motion to continue this until February 11th? Would that be the, Sean, would that be the proper?
Yeah, I mean, so the board's options right now are you could close the public hearing and vote. You could, you can continue, you could go ahead and continue the hearing. You can close the hearing and vote at a, at a later time within 45 days. So if the board wanted to, if I'm hearing from the chair, wanted to continue the hearing, I would suggest you do so on the record, be a motion to continue the hearing to February 11th, a Board of Supervisors meeting at 6:00 PM on Zoom. Or you can close the hearing and, you know, vote or not vote. It's, it's, it's up to you. I don't believe, Mr. Coles, you don't have any additional witnesses, do you?
No, sir. Mr. Kilkeny, I just want to be clear that my case is done.
His case is done.
Yeah, my case is over. I don't have anything else to present, nor do I anticipate, based upon any of the comments I've heard, the need for any sort of rebuttal or the presentation of any additional witnesses. So I don't know what continuing the hearing. I mean, I understand you have 45 days in which to render decisions, certainly. But in terms of continuing the hearing, I'm not sure how that's done in the face of an applicant saying that their case is over.
How would it be done in the case, faces, cases? It would be if any, any of the other people would at the, on February 11th, request party status and request to call their own expert to rebut any of this that was said. That would be the only reason, that would, that would be not the only reason. That would be a reason to continue the, the hearing, Mr. Coles.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So the rest of the board, thoughts?
Well, I think it's a good idea to continue. And I'd like to get more of a perspective from the neighbors over there. Possibly, you know, just talk to some of them that I know personally. I know through Westaway Drive, what, what was done over there. I'd like to see something like that absolutely prevented. And we need to have good thorough communication. Loud and clear, I heard it from Tom and Joe and Tom the other day told me he didn't know about this until just, just a few days ago. I do think that's not enough time to really create a rebuttal to this. And it's shocking when it happens in your backyard. So I would definitely like to have some communication with them. That's, that's my thoughts.
And just to recap, this is a conditional use. This is still going through subdivision or not subdivision, land development and SALDO. So there's, there's still a lot to happen. But, you know, I do appreciate what I've heard tonight.
Laura, I would just add, you know, I have no objection to continuing a hearing. I don't think it's necessary. But, you know, I am, you know, certainly sensitive to the neighbor's concerns. I just think it's important. And, and, you know, frankly, I don't even pretend to be an expert on the difference between the, the conditional use hearings and SALDO. But most of what we heard tonight, most of what we heard were issues with land development. You know, issues that are going to be resolved over the next, whatever it is, six to 12 months. You know, in front of various boards and commissions and even us, the township, not at a conditional use hearing. So, you know, I just think it's important that when we come back on February 11th, you know, I, I don't anticipate us taking, you know, 50 to 100 questions about land development issues. So I, I think we understood today, people got some late notice. We were being flexible and let people kind of talk out these issues. But from my perspective, like when we're hearing. But from my perspective, like when we're here in February eleventh, we're here for conditional use hearing. And I'm going to seek to limit the issues to the conditional use topics that are relevant at that hearing.
I'd like to make one comment if I might. On the other principal here that you haven't heard from yet, my name's Spencer Yablon. Just based on some of the comments, we take them all, you know, very seriously and we appreciate everybody joining us on the call here, but I want it to be known, I've been a community member of White Marsh Township for over forty years. So I was raised here on Birch Drive. I live here now. I've raised my kids here, put them through public schools. You know, worked in White Marsh Township as a, a coach of the Public Basketball League and a commissioner alongside Mr. Drosner. So it's, it's hard to, like we, you know, being called like not a good corporate citizen is kind of tough to listen to. So, you know, this is a building that was probably going to collapse if it wasn't acquired by somebody. It's in really bad shape. It was an eyesore. Our goal here is to clean it up and make it something that, that White Marsh could be proud of. So I wanted to just put that out there on the record. We are not, you know, massive real estate moguls out of New York City trying to build a high-rise. We're trying to do something tasteful and clean up the street.
Spencer, it's Fran McCusker. I just want to jump in real quick and, and by, and by, by all means, you're a great guy. I know that. And we're not trying to create a division between you guys in the neighborhood or anything like that. I just think in this regard, when it comes to development in White Marsh, you're well, well aware of it from living here, it's very sensitive. And when it's in somebody's backyard, there's a lot of emotions. I just think a little bit more communication around it, show a little bit of care as we go through the process and let's, let's talk it out. You know, we have a little bit of time to do that. That's all.
Thank you. Do I have? I'm sorry, did somebody else-
Mr. Koke, Kenny, if I may, I, obviously you'll, you'll advise the board on this topic, but I am a little concerned about the notion that the hearing, we have a stenographic record being kept. The decision is to be based upon the evidence presented at the hearing with an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses, as you know. I'm a little concerned about the notion that the hearing is going to close and there's going to be off the record.
There's going to be no hearing closed. They're, they made a motion to continue the hearing. That's what I believe is on the table.
Well, what I, what I mean is the, the hearing is going to be concluded for the evening. It may be continued, but between this evening and whenever the hearing opens again, there may or may not be individual conversations between decision makers and, and members of the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coles. Noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, I'm in, I'm in agreement with Fran and, and Mike and yourself as well. So if you'd like me to make a motion, I'm, I'm happy to do so.
That would be great.
Am I making a motion to conclude the hearing?
You're making a motion to continue the public hearing to the Board of Supervisors meeting on February eleventh at six P M. on Zoom.
I would like to make a motion to continue the Board of Supervisors provisional hearing at the February eleventh Board of Supervisors meeting at six P M. on Zoom.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, we will revisit this on the eleventh. Thank you.
And as, and as Mr. Cool, and, and as Mr. Coles stated, just to be clear, any of the Board of Supervisors, he is correct, should not be engaging or making a decision on this until all the evidence is record, is in the record. Any of the public can of course come on the eleventh, put their comments on, request party status that they still want it and call a witness if not, but the, but it will be a continuation of a conditional use hearing as was stated. So I do caution the supervisors from going ahead and doing a lot of fact finding outside of this hearing process, but of course this affords the public another opportunity to comment and or call witnesses on February eleven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So does that mean, if I could ask, that means though, so we're going to limit the comments because that's what I heard you want to do? Or do you want Fran to, to, to say, what's the problem here that the building's too big and that's-
What we're saying, Mr. Downey, is if you want to come back out on February eleven.
I want to, yeah, but you said you're-
Excuse me, Mr. Downey.
You said you were going to limit the comments.
Mr. Downey, you asked me a question. I'm trying to respond. I, what it's doing is on February eleventh, there will be a continuation of this hearing. If you would like to make a comment at that time, you may do so. We would ask that it be a new comment related to your review of the plans or any kind of objections that you raised that are new that you haven't expressed tonight. And any other neighbors that you may have in the neighborhood who now have another opportunity to go ahead and comment on the eleven.
Thank you.
Mark.
Thanks very much. Appreciate all the time you gave us.
Thank you very much. We're going to keep moving on. I realize some people may go off the call for this. We are at the approval of our minutes. This is for December and January. So do I have a motion to adopt the minute, meeting minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty and our January fourth, twenty twenty-one?
Excuse me, are we going to allow corrections to the minutes?
I'm proposing a motion to adopt the minutes at the moment.
Because I have, I have a correction.
Second.
Do we have any board comment on minutes? Seeing none, I'm going to suggest any public comments related to the meeting can be held at the end of the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. So we're going to drop down to our resolutions tonight. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven authorizing Kevin S. Baron and Richard L. Miller, Jr. signers for corporate authorization when opening and closing certificates of deposit for investment of township funds?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. This is, and the next one is all part of a process as we all know and we appointed, the board appointed Kevin as the Finance Director as we're going through and acclimating him into the, into the role. And as he is going through, he is noticing areas where we have the previous Finance Director's name on certain documents. In this case, this is for a corporate resolution as mentioned for authorization of opening, closing CDs. Requires two signatures, which would be the Finance Director and the Township Managers. The Township works with brokers. They work with banks. They look for CDs that provide the highest yield. We've been doing this now for several years and been very successful. Quite frankly, right now, as anyone sees, there is really not a lot of money to be made out there on any kind of twelve-month C D as compared to where we were even a year ago. That said, this document will allow us to sign anytime that we are investing or purchasing a C D on behalf of the township.
Thank you. Are there any board questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, miss, roll call. Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Sure. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Miss Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash zero eight? Should these, I, I'm going to stop here for a second. This should be twenty twenty-one. Rick? So can I go, do I have to reread resolution twenty twenty dash oh seven?
I think we're okay.
All right.
We'll make that adjustment. Noted.
Thank you. Got it. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero eight appointing Kevin S. Baron as the Voting Delegate for the Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Again, this is another appointment for Kevin. The Act thirty-two is what allows the Burckheimer to collect earned income tax, local services tax on behalf of the voting, or excuse me, the taxing bodies in Montgomery County. They are overseen by a tax collection committee with representatives of those governing bodies, whether it be a school district or a municipality. They allow for a voting delegate and then alternate delegates. I have been the alternate delegate. Our previous Finance Director was the voting delegate. This is changing and making Kevin as our voting delegate to the Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee.
Any board comment or question? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Or Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Miss Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yeah.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the stormwater facilities maintenance and easement agreement for Shindell slash thirty-one Copper Beach Drive?
So moved.
Second.
Would you like to introduce this?
I'm going to turn this over to Christopher, a brief explanation. Her and our Public Works Director have really led the project on this.
Thank you.
Good evening. At the request of the resident of thirty-one Copper Beach Drive, the Public Works Director and I discovered that he or they had a stormwater detention basin located in the majority of their rear yard. So this agreement allows us to establish maintenance responsibilities. The original grant of easement that's recorded for that property devotes all maintenance and ownership responsibilities to that property owner, but the township found, or we recommend that the township take over maintenance of the outfall structure and pipe that discharges into township's MS four. And then all other provisions of that original maintenance agreement will be maintained. So this will allow us to appropriately maintain our MS four and respect the private property on which the basin resides.
Thank you, Krista. Yeah, I think this is great to have it delineated and clear.
And Laura, I would add, you know, I want to thank Krista and Jack Fields of Public Works for, for jumping on this. The Shindells reached out to me a while back about this issue and, you know, they had to, they had to dig in, you know, Krista and Jack to kind of go into the history of the property and it's, you know, while, while they technically own that land, you know, we're talking about a, you know, a stormwater management facility which, you know, affects the entire neighborhood there. And it just doesn't make sense for a, for a resident with no background or expertise to be responsible for caring for it. So, you know, I think this is a good idea to, you know, allow them to, you know, they own their property, of course, but at least we can take care of those key areas. So again, I want to thank Krista and, and Jack for, for looking into this. And I think this is a, a good way to move forward and make sure we're taking care of that facility.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks, Krista. Any other board comments or questions? Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Does oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to appoint Burckheimer as town, as the Township's real estate tax collector for the collection of township and county real estate taxes?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. This has been something that we have been working on for a bit of time as we are evaluating the Finance Department. This started, as you know, we had an interim Finance Director come in and in addition to working in the Finance Department, making sure that they perform the duties of the Finance Director, they also were evaluating some of the strengths and weaknesses of the department. One of those was with regards to our real estate tax collection and how we could become more efficient and effective in the way in which that is done. Being discovered that the township does not have an elected tax collector like you would see in a, a first-class township that requires a great deal of effort for the township to be collecting taxes. We sent out an RFP to various entities as well as posting it on the website to companies that do this. This is what they do. We received two proposals back from two reputable companies. A third was received, but it was received late. In, in our evaluation and Kevin's evaluation of it, we are recommending that Burckheimer be awarded the contract to collect real estate taxes. That would be both the township and the county real estate taxes going forward. Burckheimer is a known entity. We just talked about them. They are the Act thirty-two Collector of Earned Income Tax. They, this is something that they do as part of a business in terms of collecting real estate taxes and do it for numerous municipalities in southeastern P A. We look at this too, and what we saw, especially going through COVID, is a reduction in contacts. And this allows the majority of our taxes and tax revenue come from mortgage companies. People escrow their real estate taxes. We receive large chunks from those large mortgage companies around the country. Also, in people still want to be able to pay quickly and they want to pay by credit card. That is an option that, that would be presented to them with a fee that would be noted for them to do that as well. We would not be able to stamp any tax bills. Burckheimer does have an office in Bridgeport. People came in or they delivered the tax bill to us. We're not going to, we're not turning away tax dollars. We would simply just forward that along to Burckheimer. So that would be a little bit of a change for, for some folks who do come in and actually pay their taxes. We would just take those and then forward them along to Burckheimer. It would be the same relationship as we have with regards to our earned income tax. They do all the collection. Also, they, they would then post it and return those funds to one of our depositories. There would be a reconciliation of all those funds each month as we would receive them, no different than what we do with our earned income tax. There, there is also, as transfers of homes, there's interims that have to be, that have to be sent out. They will handle all of that. They handle all of the producing of the tax bills, all of postage from that standpoint. It is basically looking at it and coming, looking at the, the cost. It is roughly under twenty-five, twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-five thousand dollars. We had a full-time individual retire, you know, full-time individual and salary was much more than the, the twenty-five thousand dollars. So we think that this will create more efficiency to allow the department to focus on aspects of the, the township that they need to focus on. We think it will create more effectiveness. We don't anticipate that this is going to impact our collection of, of real estate taxes whatsoever. You know, generally, we're, you know, up around a hundred percent collection that we receive with regards to our real estate taxes. So from that standpoint and consulting with our, as I mentioned, our interim and then as well as in the time with Kevin here, that is our recommendation to the board is to award the contract to Burckheimer for the collection of real estate taxes.
Thank you, Rick. Do we have any board comment or question? Any public comment?
I, I'd like to know how, how will the public be able to get a paid receipt?
Sure. So Burckheimer will be able to provide receipts to any resident that requests a receipt.
But that, does that mean you have to go to their office in order to do it?
No, they can mail, they can mail a receipt to you. That's not a problem at all.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of the following individuals to Boards and Commissions? Carly Grease for the Library Board term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Lisa Litton, sorry, Litton, Drayton, Environment- Lisa Litton, sorry, Litton Drayton Environmental Advisory Board term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And Jim Tone Environmental Advisory Board term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any board comment? I will say I always appreciate that, you know, people are wanting to be involved and thank you. I don't know who is on the call here, if they would like to say anything. I certainly don't want to put anybody on the spot. So it's totally fine if you don't. Do we have any public comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. First, let me just start off by saying that this has nothing to do with the individuals themselves who are appointed. If somehow they feel slighted by what I'm going to say, this is not a comment to them. It's a comment to the board of supervisors. This is another flawed process and you should both, you should all be ashamed of yourselves on this. There was no advertisement whatsoever about any of these positions. Laura, I sent you a copy of with pain townships. Email blast that goes out. They did it for a few weeks advertising for somebody to participate on their shade tree commission. This is nothing more than just cronyism appointments by Michael for the EAB. And I'm not even sure who the liaison is for the library board. But it's awful. The applications that you attached to this, I'm guessing that they were done after the fact, after the people were asked to be on this commission and boards. There are no qualifications that are specified. Your job is to find qualified residents to participate on these boards and commissions. And that would mean bringing people forward who have a passion for the particular area, who have shown up for some of these meetings. The two people that are going to be on the EAB, neither one of them has ever been to an environmental advisory board meeting. And Lisa is the chair of the media advisory board. She's already a board member. So why not get somebody else in the township? Michael, stop shaking your head and rolling your eyes. You've, you've made faces at me.
Okay, that's.
It's hard not to, Eli.
Okay.
Okay. This is public comment. Finish, wrap up, please.
Well, I have five minutes of public comment. I'm nowhere near that. We need residents to come to these boards who have big ideas, who will do work, who will challenge the staff from the lies that are being told and not be directed by them. Other municipalities have boards and commissions and they're run by the residents themselves. This is shameful. You, Cheryl Darby, she applied to be on the environmental advisory board. You completely dismissed her. This is a woman who happens to be a friend of mine and she came to many meetings. She made a video for a public service video for this township with her children on recycling, which has now conveniently been removed from the township website. You didn't even have the courtesy to call her and tell her why. And I know she's going to be embarrassed when I talk about her now, but my friend Linda Dahl, she wanted to be on the library board. This is a woman who gave years of herself to the, as president of the library foundation, or whatever it's called, to raise money. And she could run that library. Now, I don't know if it's because you don't like these people, because they're caustic like me, because they are on the Republican Party, or they're just not likable to you. But that's not right. You owe it to this township to put a diverse group of people who can debate, who can argue and not just get along and go along. We, we've seen the problems that that creates and that's got to stop.
Do we have any other public comment?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
This is Deborah Harris. I'd like to agree with Eli, particularly in the part where he says other townships do advertise these. I'm not criticizing these two people. I don't know them at all, or three people. But you do, they advertise them more. I was driving through over Marion. They had it on the big lighted sign outside their township building that they were looking for somebody for their EAB. So as I say, no criticism of these individuals. I don't know them, but it would have been nice to have seen these open spots advertised widely through the township so that all residents feel like they had an opportunity to apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Laura, if I could just follow up, you know, from, I just can't help myself, you know, from Eli, you know, you know, accusing us of, I think the quote was shameless cronyism here in our local township board. It's incredibly disappointing to watch him flap his hands on camera right now. Kind of embarrassing. More importantly, I think there's a couple of things that we need to clarify regarding advertising and what you see in other places. I have, in fact, advertised these positions on social media when we need new applicants. However, there are some years like this one where we have applicants. And if Eli had read the documents, especially, I'm just looking right now, the first one I looked down at was, was Jim Tone, who is not some type of old friend of mine. You know, I met Jim years ago, but I don't know him very well. He applied last year for a couple of boards, including EAB, and we weren't able to accommodate them. So that is not an application that was filled out post hoc. That's an application that was on ahead of time. So if we have applicants that have, that have submitted paperwork, it stays in our Dropbox folder. And every year around November, December, we have the ability to review them. And if there's people that are there that are interested and we reach out to them and they want to be a part of it, we give them the opportunity. If we don't have applicants or we're struggling to find the right people, yes, there are chances that we can advertise them. You know, we also, you know, the, each individual board has the ability to do that as well, to talk to their friends or their colleagues about other people that may want to do it. With respect to Ms. Darby, I think it's unfortunate that you go name her and drag her into this. I did call her twice. That was about two years ago now, where someone else was selected. And, you know, as most people know, that individual we selected was incredibly qualified for the position. And Ms. Darby didn't, didn't come back to an EAB meeting. And if she had and she showed continued interest, I think she certainly would have been considered, but she didn't. And so it seemed clear that she wasn't interested in EAB anymore. And if, if her feelings were hurt because of that, that's why I called her to talk to her about. But, you know, if you don't, if you're not successful and you apply for something, it doesn't mean you walk away forever. And I would encourage her to, if she really is passionate about EAB, to come back to EAB meetings. I know you're, you'd be welcome to have her and I'm welcome to have her as well. But, but what we don't want in our boards, and I know Eli enjoys confrontation with residents in the township, but we really want a collaborative approach. We want people that are going to work together. They're going to talk to each other like professionals, like good citizens and, and try to reach common ground on issues in front of us. We don't want people who are going to stand up and accuse everyone of being liars and to question our township staff and accuse our township staff of being liars. To me, that is unacceptable. That's not how we run our township. And I won't allow people to get up in public meetings and accuse our staff of acting that way. Thank you, Laura.
Sure. I think we had a unanimous vote on that. I think that was.
We did. We recorded the unanimous vote again.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for a sign in the ultimate right of way at five oh five and a half Germantown Pike?
I'm moved. Second.
Turn it over to Mr. Guttenplan for a review of this item.
Thank you. This is a sign that is being proposed for the dentist's office that was approved by this board as a conditional use a couple of months ago at five oh five and a half Germantown Pike, essentially across the street from the township building. This is a schematic of the sign that's being proposed. The sign itself meets all the zoning requirements for the VC district. It's a monument sign of the proper size and proper height. Just to understand this diagram quickly, the brick sits on the ground. Everything you see below the brick is underground supporting the sign. This was reviewed by Krista Heinrich Township Engineer for site distance concerns. This is a site plan that shows the general location of the sign. This is the building at five oh five and a half Germantown Pike. The yellow next to the red, little red area here, which is the sign, is the walkway into the building. The driveway closest to the building that accesses the parking is on, essentially on top of the drawing here. It's going to be a one-way in entryway. This is out of Krista's memo that she prepared after doing a site visit on January twenty-second, showing the location of the sign, looking from the driveway I just showed you and the location of the sign that goes into five oh nine Germantown Pike and to the new townhouses, indicating that looking in both directions, the sign being twelve feet back from the curb does not hinder site distance at either of the driveways. And as a result, Krista has recommended approval of the hold harmless agreement.
Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Do we have any board comments or questions? Seeing none, are there any public comments? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to authorize the public bid for the twenty-twenty-one road paving agreement program?
So moved.
Second. Going to turn this over to Krista.
Hello again. Tonight, we are requesting authorization to bid the documents for the twenty-twenty-one road program. In the memo, there's the list of the twelve roads, I believe, that are selected for resurfacing. Public Works Director and myself reviewed these and we would request that you authorize us to bid this project.
Thanks, Krista. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Well, I've been waiting for this one. I know a lot of people have been. Do I have a motion to authorize the public bid for the Westaway Road Stormwater Improvement Project?
So moved.
A second.
This could be Krista, Rick. Krista, I saw you go live first.
Yeah, we're going to turn it over to Krista to explain.
Yep, I'm also happy to report this one. We are requesting authorization to bid the Westaway Drive Stormwater Improvements Project. This was a project that was identified in the, I believe, twenty-fifth, two thousand and five, I'm sorry, Stormwater Task Force Report. It was originally engineered and bid in twenty-eighteen. However, the bids came in above budget, so it is now ready to be rebid. And that would happen hopefully sometime in February for hopefully then a March construction start. This would be approximately twenty-five hundred linear feet of stormwater piping, eight manholes and twenty-seven inlets from Fields Drive to Germantown Pike.
Thank you. Any board comment?
I'll just say, Laura, like you, it's been a long time coming. Many, many years we've struggled on Westaway Drive with, with the flooding and the water shooting past our house. And I know all of my neighbors on Westaway Drive and Fields are looking forward to some alleviation of that. So thanks, thanks, Krista, for bringing that up and for all your help over the past year as well. Thanks.
Any other board comment? Do we have any public comment?
I'd like to comment on this as well. The problems on Westaway Drive are of the township's own making. The huge amount of flooding that goes in front of Fran's house that comes out of White Marsh Woods. And White Marsh Woods was approved back whenever it was approved to have storm basins that failed and did not work. Now, White Marsh Woods is a homeowners association. Somehow the township agreed to go in there and do some remediation on the taxpayer dollar to do some repairs on those stormwater basins, but those also failed. Water continues to pour out of that one basin at the lower end and go on to Fran Street and then down into Westaway. And unless I'm mistaken, that's not going to change from any of these improvements. There's going to be a main going down Westaway and that's, and that's it. The other piece of this is that you have all the water coming from White Marsh Knolls. And then you're stopping at Fields. And so you have this deluge of water that's going down Westaway in a bigger pipe that's supposed to keep it off the street and capture it. But then when it gets down to Fields, where is it going to go? So there are all these lines that are going down Fields and the other streets going into Thomas Road. And all of those manhole covers today get blown off every time there is a storm. So this is only a piecemeal project. You're not solving all of the flooding that's taking place in White Marsh Valley Farms. And those residents should have the ability to be protected as well. Now, this is a bigger project and you've received a proposal from the Natural Lands to look at basins and within the township. And one of the comments is that basins don't work. And that what we have to do is we have to start capturing water where it lands. So why are we not doing anything with White Marsh Woods? And instead of all those swaths of green grass that they put in trees and all the people that live in White Marsh Valley Farms, they have their downspouts all connected to piping that goes right into the street. Why aren't they being incentivized in some way to put in rain gardens to capture that water in place? This is not going to be a be-all and end-all piece. And, you know, I don't know what you're thinking, but there are going to be more problems coming as a result of this.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, the motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number five for White Marsh Knolls? The LLC Germantown Pike in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
So moved. Second.
Krista?
Yes, this is a, at the developer's request for release of escrowed monies. We inspected the site and found what they are requesting has been installed per the plan. So we are recommending a partial release of escrow. And I wanted to point out that there is over five hundred thousand dollars remaining in escrow following this release.
Thank you. I was going to ask you to state that and you went ahead and did anyway. Thank you. Do we have any public comment questions?
I would just like to comment on this for Mr. Drosner, that this is exactly a case where township staff has essentially lied. The tree protections that were already paid back for on these escrows were in fact not per plan. The township arborist made a comment that they were, they were not. The township engineer before Krista made a comment that they were per plan. They were not per plan. And in recent shade tree meeting, Christian did a site visit and he pointed out that they were out of compliance. And you have a copy of that. and he pointed out that they were out of compliance, and you have a copy of that. So there, an example.
Any other public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number two for the Hill at White Marsh Phase Two, 4,000 Fox Hound Drive, in the amount of $572,955.30?
So moved. Second.
Krista?
This is a request from the developer's representative for partial release of escrow. Again, we reviewed the request and found the items requested to have been installed per the plans and are recommending this partial release. And again, since I noted for the previous, do it here too, there's 450,000 and change left in escrow following this release.
Any board comment? Thank you, Krista.
Yeah, I have a public comment.
Yeah, is there any other, no board comment at the moment? Okay, public comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, yes, go ahead. Yeah, I'm Emmett Miller. I live at 4108 Fountain Green Road. My property backs up to the Hill Phase Two project. And I'm just inquiring about the status of the temporary construction access road that was built and the temporary construction access road fence that was built along the back of my property here. They were built back in December of 2018 for the sole purpose of the construction of the Hill at Phase Two project. Now, the hill has been issued occupancy permits for Phase Two. People are residing there now. There has been no construction since around July-ish of 2020. There are no construction workers, no construction materials, no construction trailers. The telephone and electric wires that were installed for the construction site have all been taken out and removed. So why are the road, the temporary construction access road fence and road still there? The entire Hill and Foundation property, except for the piece behind my house, has a nice wooden, what I would describe as a farm fence, all the way around it. Yet I have a six-foot construction fence that runs from Fountain Green Road all the way up to Barbary Road. And I just, I don't understand. I'm getting the feeling that they're trying to get us used to this staying there, and they want to keep this as a permanent fence and a permanent road. In fact, yesterday, ironically, there were some workers out there, and they picked the fence up. I thought they were going to remove the fence. No, they just put it down and moved it back 10 feet and put it up again. I do not understand why this construction access road fence has to be there. There is no construction. And the road that was built temporarily, there is no trucks traveling on this road. Why is it there? What's going on if they are finished? That's my, maybe Krista can answer that, or Charlie, or Rick, or somebody. Somebody must know something.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I'm not too sure if you're Rick. Rick might be able to best answer this.
Sure. You know, I will let Krista answer the question on the fence. The fence was something that was required to be that way by issuance of the court. The township did submit to the court to try and end the tack car from being there. That is something that we authorized the Solicitor's Office to have temporary injunction to terminate the use of the tack car. Unfortunately, the court did not rule in our favor. They did say, though, that they would have to allow access with regards to the fence that is there. That is the access that you saw them, I guess, moving the other day. Not removal of the fence, but just allowing access up along the rear of the properties. That is what they were required to do at this time. The township does have a permanent, what is it, Sean, that we have with the Hill injunction that we are going through at this time? But right now, that is in litigation.
Yeah, we're in the process of trying to bring it forward and get it before a judge. But unfortunately, after they ruled against our temporary injunction, the wheels of justice have been going slowly. But we've been directed by the Board of Supervisors, actually, this evening. I was directed to push this forward as fast as possibly can to be responsive to the residents.
Yeah, well, Mr. Kilkenny, I mean, I read that order. I sat in on that hearing. And the order said they had six weeks to get, you know, six weeks from that date to get rid of the construction fence and the construction road. I don't understand how they won. What am I missing? I mean, I read the order.
I haven't looked at the order in a while, Mr. Miller. I'm not doubting you. I'll review it with staff tomorrow and go over it, and we'll do that. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
What you saw with the fence was they were relocating that to allow for pedestrian access.
Yeah, that's fine. That's all well and good. But I don't even want the fence there. There's no reason for a construction fence. There is no construction. They haven't done anything in seven months. When we had that snow back in December, I looked over my neighbor's property. It's so flabby that the fence fell down, and I was watching deer march through the opening in the fence there. It's not a great fence to begin with, because it's a temporary construction access road fence. That's all it is. And it looks terrible. I can't see over it. Nobody can see over it. The entire property has a wooden farm fence. That would be sufficient to keep whatever they think is going in there out. I mean, Mr. Dixon had that wooden fence there forever. Nobody ever jumped the fence or went into that property. I'm missing the point of this construction access road fence when there is no construction. I get it. They needed it for safety reasons way back when, but it's over. There is no construction. That phase is done.
Unfortunately, Mr. Miller, this is in litigation.
Yeah, well.
And the township is being supportive of the residents by, as Mr. Kilkenny said, the board said to continue to push this forward, being mindful of the concerns of the residents. So the issue is, we have to get before a judge to be able to argue our case.
Well, we can go back. Well, okay, all right. Okay, so it's, we haven't, we don't have a, I'm sorry, you don't have a court date yet for this?
We do not.
Yeah, I don't even see the argument that the Hill could possibly put up to keep a temporary fence up. It doesn't make any sense. It really doesn't.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Miller. Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Non-opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the final escrow release number two for Mercedes-Benz of Fort Washington, 404 Pennsylvania Avenue, in the amount of $64,374.65?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
This project was actually fully completed way back in 2012. This remaining escrow had been held as maintenance security. And the new Finance Director discovered that it was sitting there, and we are recommending that that finally be released.
Very good. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,203,650.72? Payroll totaling $702,273.41, and pension paid costs totaling $9,6764.82 for December 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any board or public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Do I have a motion to authorize the Order and Settlement Stipulation between Gellman Associates LTD Partnership, Ten Ridge Pike, Washington, or White Marsh Shopping Center versus Monaco Board of Assessment Appeals, resulting in the decrease in the assessment between 2017 and 2020, requiring a repayment of $8,032 in township real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
As we discussed, we review all of these executively. These are really led by the school district, who is the largest taxing body in the municipality. They have been negotiating settlements through the Board of Assessment. As the Solicitor stated, there is a new judge that is in charge of this, and she has been in many Montgomery County municipalities moving along some of these dormant assessment appeals to a resolution at this point. In this particular case, this is the White Marsh Shopping Center. This has been ongoing since 2017. Unfortunately for us, there is an assessment that is being decreased. Therefore, there will be a repayment of, as you mentioned, just over $8,000 in township real estate taxes.
Thank you. Do we have any board comment or question? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Non-opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the Order and Settlement Stipulation between Green Valley Country Club, 201 West Ridge Pike versus Monaco Board of Assessment Appeals, resulting in the decrease in the assessment between 2017 and 2020, requiring a repayment of $3,565.19 in township real estate taxes?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller?
This is the same, just different property. This is the Green Valley Country Club. Again, this is one that was from 2017. And again, this was a decrease in the assessment, and therefore, there will be a repayment of just over $3,500 in real estate taxes.
Thank you. Any board question or comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Non-opposed, motion carries. Do you might have a motion to authorize the Order and Settlement Stipulation between Stonemore PA LLC, 80 Stanton Avenue, the George Washington Cemetery versus Monaco Board of Appeal Assessment Appeals, resulting in the decrease in the assessment between 2018 and 2020, requiring a repayment of $8,296.21 in township real estate tax?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Same. This is just George Washington Cemetery. The one thing that I'll note about all of these is these have been previously agreed to by the school district in Montgomery County. They have to be agreed to by all three taxing bodies, where the third one generally comes to us last if we're not involved in the actual case. So they've worked out the deal on this, and unfortunately, with this one, again, decrease in the assessment from 2018 and repayment of a little over $8,200.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Non-opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the Order and Settlement Stipulation between CVS Pharmacy, 7,000 Butler Pike versus Monaco Board of Assessment Appeals, resulting in the increase in the assessment between 2014 and 2020, requiring a payment of $37,606.74 in township real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, save the best for last here. With regards to CVS, this was an increase in, and more than covers the decreases in the repayments of the previous three. So this was in our favor. This went back all the way to 2014. So you can really tell that the court system is trying to move a lot of these along with the school district and coming to a resolution. And in this one, again, we receive a little over $37,000.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Non-opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And that ends the core of our agenda. So I'm going to move into public comment period.
Hi, I'd like to comment.
Yes?
This is Deborah Harris, and I would like a correction to the December minutes regarding my comments. I was referencing a resolution sent from the EAB to the Board of Supervisors. The minutes indicate that the resolution came from the EAB Working Group, and the resolution was actually passed by the entire EAB Board. And so I'd like that correction to be reflected in the minutes.
So noted. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
This is Linda Dawes. I'd like to make a comment. Sure. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for the first issue on the 606 and 608 toll development thing for having such patience and listening to the residents. Because just as a person out here, when you see on the Board of Supervisors' agenda some item, some development item, you just think that that's the end of it, that you are now making the vote, and that's going to be the decision. And so people tune in because they want to speak their piece. Even though it was just the conditional use, you all listened to the parts about the stormwater management and the trees. And people just want you guys to hear it, the Board of Supervisors to hear it. Because you have all these separate little meetings, but we don't know what's getting back to you. So I'm very grateful that you listened to everybody's comments, even though it probably wasn't the appropriate time to be saying it, because we want you to know, because you are the ones that are going to be voting on it ultimately. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Any other public comments?
I have a comment. I have a difference of opinion than Linda does with regard to how you deal with the public. I think that there's this ongoing problem with communication that starts with the minutes. I brought this up many times before. The minutes are not characterizing accurately what people have to say. At the organizational meeting, I raised objections to Mr. Kilkenny's appointment due to potential conflicts of interest and Mr. Drausner's potential conflicts of interest. And in the minutes, there's no mention that I said anything about conflicts of interest, nothing. Yet, Mr. Drausner, his comments that preceded mine that related to a concern brought by another resident were almost written verbatim. With regard to the EAB resolution, many members of our working group came and spoke at length in detail about the importance of that, and that was not reflected in the minutes, and it failed to really serve as a summary. There are times where people have complaints, legitimate complaints. And I think that it's incumbent on you, as Board of Supervisors, to be transparent about those complaints, to be empathetic about those complaints, to be thoughtful in your replies. And those replies also concern emails. I understand many friends, many acquaintances have written emails, as have I, that have never been responded to. And getting a response back that says, "We'll take it under advisement," or "Thank you," that's not thoughtful. We are the customers of White Marsh Township. And as customers,
And as customers, you are there to serve us. And if I am caustic, so be it. In my career as a physical therapist for 30 years, I worked with many challenging and difficult patients. And you may not believe this, but I was able to be thoughtful, considerate, and compassionate with those individuals, hear them out, and listen to them, but not just listen, but act on what their concerns were. And it's those actions that continue to be missing in this township. We don't need, I don't need, rah rah, everything is great in White Marsh Township. Things are not so great in White Marsh Township, particularly related to the environment. And that, of course, is very near and dear to my heart. I want to see action on the environment. Vince, you asked me two meetings ago for low-hanging fruit. Well, we sent you a list of low-hanging fruit. I didn't get a reply back. Nobody on our working group got a reply back. "Thank you for this. We're going to get on it," or "Let's talk about this further." Nothing. That's not right. That's not right. And finally, at the last meeting, at the organizational meeting, unless I misunderstood, these meetings are supposed to start at 7:00. And I understand COVID maybe makes them go at 6:00. But that's not really giving people an opportunity to show up to meetings. You made comments tonight that, you know, we put announcements out there and our website. Well, the website's still broken, and there are still problems on the website with agendas and multiple agendas and not being able to find these things. So communication continues to be a major issue in that. And I'd like this meeting to go back to 7:00. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, I'd like to comment. This is Sedell Zo. I want to thank you for the vote to continue the conditional use hearing. I believe that was the right thing to do. And it's so clear that residents don't understand what conditional use is all about. The land development process, even zoning, starting with zoning, is a tangled web of legalities, of lots of terminology that's unknown and not understood to the vast majority of the public. And it is the right thing for the supervisors to be patient, to be understanding, and to be helpful. So your decision to continue the hearing was perfect. And I do hope that you will entertain a variety of comments and questions when that hearing is continued, even if they might not be legally germane to the conditional use process. They are germane to the welfare of a community. They are important to the residents. And if it's necessary to explain to a resident that this is not a conditional use issue, it doesn't belong in this hearing, please do so in a thoughtful and patient way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I would like to announce that we had executive session on January 12 discussing real estate and litigation. And tonight, January 28, doing the same, discussing real estate and litigation. Is there any other date I missed, Rick?
That was it. Sorry, I was muted.
As always, I appreciate everybody's comments and time, and thank you for being on the call tonight. Stay safe, stay warm. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Again.
In favor? Good night, everybody. Thank you.